Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting tonight. And I'd like for you to, I'm on the first call to meeting order, I always forget about that. So we've called the meeting to order, and our first order of business is our opening ceremony. And tonight, we have the presentation of colors from our Mount Pleasant Junior ROTC program. And our color guard commander is Cadet Major Kaitlin Coop. The color guard members are Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Timothy Vincent, Cadet Chief Master Sergeant Cody Lauer, and Cadet Technical Sergeant Joseph Myles. The cadets are led and instructed by Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLafflin, United States Air Force retired, and Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell, United States Air Force retired. So would you all join me as we stand in honor of the presentation of colors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Oath. Order, colors. Order. I, haste, or, arch.
for tonight. And we've had our agenda, and we've reviewed it, and had our work session and all that. So do I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is set as presented. All right, we'll move right on into section four is our recognitions section. And our first recognition tonight will be the Impact Through Education Awards. I'd like to ask Ms. Ronnie Boone to come to the podium, and she's our public relations director, and she'll be making these presentations.
Tonight, I am pleased to present Impact Through Education Awards to students and staff at Weddington Hills Elementary School and the Cabarrus-Canapolis Early College High School. Before we begin, I'd like to thank our friends at Concord Printing for making these awards possible through its generous sponsorship. We certainly appreciate their support. Now on to tonight's awards. We will begin with Weddington Hills Elementary School, and at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Weddington Hills administrative team to please come forward to stand with And they're all here. Our first honoree from Weddington Hills Elementary is Emily Grace Shropshire. Would Emily Grace and her family please come forward? In the classroom, Emily Grace is an actively engaged learner. She works well independently and in a collaborative setting. Her questioning is thoughtful and reflective of her learning. She is an extremely kind-hearted girl who acts as a leader to assist others when problem-solving. Emily Grace's leadership skills are evident outside the classroom as well through extracurricular activities and volunteering opportunities. She has participated in school plays, taken on the challenge of writing and anchoring for the school's news broadcast, and volunteered for morning duties such as flag patrol and safety patrol. She has also made a commitment to volunteering in a kindergarten classroom where she assists younger students with their reading and math skills. In addition, her fun nature, her fun-natured personality carries beyond the school and into our local community where she is a Girl Scout. Overall, Emily Grace is a well-balanced and positive learner who seeks opportunities to grow through real-world challenges and sees her desire to learn with all those, and shares her desire to learn with all those around her. Our next honoree from Weddington Hills Elementary is Charles Kalinowski. Would Charles and his family please come forward? Oh, I'm sorry, it's Wilson Charles Kalinowski. I'm so sorry. Would Wilson and his family please come forward? Inside the classroom, Wilson demonstrates strong leadership ability and an outstanding work ethic. He works well with others and is always ready to take on any challenge that activities and workshops may offer. Whether he's working independently or in a small group setting, Wilson's positive attitude toward learning is apparent and contagious. Although Wilson takes the leadership role naturally, he is also open to listening to others and incorporating their ideas to allow for shared ownership. Not only is Wilson an A honor roll student, he also has talents that expand outside the classroom. He is participating in Weddington's production of Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, which requires a commitment of several hours weekly for practice both after school and at home. He is also a member of the Safety Patrol, where his behavior and character serve as an example to others. In addition, Wilson has acted as a weather personality on the school-wide morning broadcast, and has shown such potential that he has moved over to the news anchor's chair. Overall, Wilson is an exceptional student that makes a positive impact on others around him. Our next honoree from Weddington Hills is Ms. Sarah Scott. Would Ms. Scott and her family please come forward?[580.01][580.01](laughter) She's not gonna come? Ms. Scott currently is in her 11th year of teaching 5th grade at Weddington Hills Elementary School. Her love and devotion to teaching and to her students is evident from the moment you reach her classroom door. She demonstrates the highest level of professional commitment and competency in her work with students and colleagues. Her contributions have been outstanding and have helped shape the instructional program and culture of the school. She sets high standards for herself and her students, and then works hard to see that they are met. She is constantly broadening her knowledge, improving her skills, and sharing with her peers what she has learned. To carry out her professional responsibilities, she gives generously of her valuable time and often works extended hours beyond the school day. Ms. Scott created the curriculum for and implemented the Wildcats on the Run, on the Move, the Wildcats on the Move Running Club. This year, more than 85 students have signed up to be members of that club. In addition, Ms. Scott has partnered with a parent volunteer to plan and produce the school's yearly theatrical performance of Wonka. Ms. Scott also is coordinating and designing the school yearbook. She has served as the chair of the following committees: the School Improvement Team, the Goal Team, and the Social Committee. Ms. Scott is very passionate about her profession and a great asset to the educational community. Weddington Hills is proud to recognize Sarah Scott as an Impact Through Education recipient. And our final honoree from Weddington Hills Elementary School is another Sarah, Sarah Hammonds. Would Ms. Hammonds and her family please come forward? As you enter Weddington Hills Elementary School, the first person you will encounter is Sarah Hammonds. Mrs. Hammonds is currently in her third year as Front Office Secretary at Weddington Hills Elementary School. Even though her official title is Front Office Secretary, Mrs. Hammonds wears a variety of hats throughout the school day. On any given day, she may fill the role of school nurse, security professional, traffic controller, mother, counselor, cheerleader, mediator, project manager, clerical expert, and crisis manager. Mrs. Hammonds handles all of those roles with great finesse. Sarah has a genuine concern for the students and staff at Weddington Hills. She always has a smile and kind words for others. Mrs. Hammonds not only accepts tasks and requests with a smile, she also takes the initiative to make the office run smoothly. Everyone who visits the office comments on her warm and caring personality. Weddington Hills is a better place for students, staff, and parents because of Sarah. Next, we will honor Impact Through Education Award recipients from the Cabarrus-Canapolis Early College High School. Would any members of the administrative team from the Early College please come forward? Our first honoree from the Early College High School this evening is Ariel Duncan. Would Ariel and her family please come forward? Ariel Duncan is a senior at the Early College High School with a 4.3 GPA and a member of the National Honor Society. She's part of the first graduating class at the Cabarrus-Canapolis, Cabarrus-Canapolis Early College High School, and will be graduating in May with both her high school diploma and associate in arts degree from Roanoke Barrows Community College. This fall, she will attend the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, majoring in hospitality and tourism, with two years of college already behind her. Over the past four years, Ariel has exhibited leadership in two important functions of a high school: yearbook and prom. She's played a major role in creating the Early College High School Yearbook, where she has been on the staff for all four years, serving as the editor for the past three years. Ariel is also a member of the Executive Board for the school's prom committee. The Early College High School is proud to recognize Ariel for making an impact through education. Our next honoree from the Early College High School is Cody Brayden. Would Cody and his family please come forward? Cody Brayden is a junior at the Early College High School, where he has a 4.6 GPA and is also a member of the National Honor Society. Cody serves as a peer tutor in math for several students. In addition to his coursework, Cody is very active outside the classroom with various clubs and committees. He is a Student Government Association representative and has volunteered for the blood drive, the canned food drive, voter registration, Drug Free Week, and numerous fundraisers. He is a member of the Executive Board for the prom, and he has taken a leadership role in creating and running both the flag football and basketball tournament fundraisers. Cody serves as a student ambassador during the, during the Early College's prospective students night, student nights, and interview process. He also has worked with the freshman transition camp for two years, serving this last year as one of two student leaders for the camp. The Early College High School is proud to recognize Cody for making an impact through education. Our next honoree from the Early College is Elizabeth Thompson. Would Ms. Thompson and her family please come forward? Elizabeth Thompson teaches math at the Early College and is one of the original faculty members who opened the school in 2009. Before coming to the Early College High School, she taught for four years at Lake Norman High School. She is a graduate of Appalachian State University, where she was also a teaching fellow. Ms. Thompson is the teacher leader all schools need. In the classroom, she was instrumental in the Early College's shift to integrated mathematics, where she completely changed her instructional delivery from traditional to inquiry-based. Students now take ownership in their learning, and she facilitates the process. Ms. Thompson is always there for the students when they need her, tutoring before and after school, close to two and a half hours each day. Her leadership outside the classroom is equally impressive, where she has served as the School Improvement Team Chair and leads the school's four-day freshman transition camp. Often, she sees something that needs to be done within the school and just does it without being asked or seeking any credit. More importantly, Ms. Thompson is a moral compass, keeping the faculty and staff-student focused by always looking at what's in the best interest of the students. She has truly been a force in shaping the culture and climate of the Early College. Congratulations, Ms. Thompson, for making an impact through education at the Early And our final honoree from the Early College High School is Ms. Harriet Lovett. Would Ms. Lovett and her family please come forward? Harriet Lovett is the one and only support personnel at the Early College.[1291.58][1291.58](laughter) While her official title, (laughter) while her official title is that of data manager and treasurer, she is much, much more to the ECHS. She is the face who welcomes visitors, the voice who answers callers' requests, the giver of Band-Aids, the taker of temperatures, the reassuring words of a mentor to students that need her, the keeper of all files, and the tracker of students and teachers throughout the day. Unlike other data managers or treasurers who have an office with the door to close when they need quiet time to work, her door is the main door and her office is the main office. It is not uncommon for her to multitask her way through the day, inputting semester grades, checking out students, or tending to a student who is not feeling well. Ms. Lovett approaches her demanding job every day, juggling multiple tasks, all with a smile and kind words. In the time that she has been with the Early College, she has become indispensable, and when she is not there, the school fills the void.
Ms. Boone, as she was making these presentations, I wanted her to say it, but she didn't say it. But that's okay, though, if you noticed, this was our first Impact Through Education Awards tonight for the Early College High School. And we have with us here Vance Fishback with us. Vance, if you will, I'd like for you, not only for the viewing folks that's here tonight, but for the viewing audience as well, tell these folks a little bit about the Early College, where it is, what it's all about. If you'll take just a minute or two and do that, I'd appreciate it.
The Early College is located on the south campus of Roanoke Barrows Community College. Next year, we'll have approximately 240 students. This is our fourth year in existence. Students come to us as freshmen, and during their time there, they earn both their high school and associate's degree at the same time. So that when they finish, they have the opportunity to have that associate's degree or up to two years of transfer credit. Our first graduating class, we have 20 of our 24 that are graduating have their associate's degree. So that's a big accomplishment for us. Sorry, I didn't have, I wasn't told I was going to be speaking, so.[1472.42][1472.42](laughter) But it's a very unique situation, and it's one where the students have to make a commitment to come there. They work very hard, they're in classes with their, their RCC peers. While there, we have, they've outperformed the RCC peers in their classrooms in, in the grade point averages, and done well on the, on the academic side on the high school as well.
Thank you, Vance. You know, we're real proud of what you're doing up there, and real proud of the students. And Ariel, you know, I guess you'll be one that's getting the two-year degree right on, right off the bat, you know, so there'll be some more to follow right behind you, and so I appreciate what you're doing there. And I apologize for not putting, you know, for putting you on the spot like that.
That's all right.[1517.23][1517.23](laughter)
Hey, like I say, you know, all the years, this is the first time we've had to do this, and so we just wanted to make the public aware. And the people be asking me, what's the Early College? So now they know. Tell them to view the tape.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, thank you again.[1530.42][1530.42](applause) Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next presentation will be the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award, and we'll have Mr. Tim Vaughn from Hilbush Ford, and Ms. Kathy Auger, and Dr. Barry Shepherd to make this presentation here this evening. Mr. Vaughn, good to have you with us. I hope you're selling a bunch of Fords these days.[1555.23][1555.23](laughter)
Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools. As always, Mr. Vaughn, we appreciate Hilbush Ford's generosity, and we thank you for saluting one of our outstanding teachers each month. The Cabarrus County Schools Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for March 2013 is Donna Mendez. Ms. Mendez, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team
Donna Mendez is a 3rd grade teacher at Cox Mill Elementary School. She was nominated by a parent. In the nomination, the parent wrote, "This teacher exemplifies everything a teacher should be: positive, patient, caring. My son had struggled in school since he started. This year, he has morphed into a child who loves to go to school every day and is on the honor roll. He literally has transformed from a reluctant class participant into an engaged, interested, and willing student." Ms. Mendez's ideas are simple: keep it positive, and make it fun and interesting. She does this by relating class subjects to real-life, meaningful examples. She also volunteers her time after school every week to tutor her students. Our parent closes by stating, "I'm extremely grateful to her and hope that you feel this amazing woman deserves recognition." And we certainly do. Ms. Mendez, on behalf of all of us in Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for this exemplary spirit of dedication and commitment to your students. And now, please allow Mr. Vaughn and Dr. Shepherd to present you with a few tokens of appreciation, and allow our board members to shake your hands and congratulate you.[1692.82][1692.82](applause)
I really appreciate Mr. Vaughn and Buddy Hilbush doing this for each month, for us. They've been doing it for a couple of years now, and so you parents and students out there watching this, submit some teacher's name, so we can have some more winners here as we go along. We have our next presentation with Ms. Auger and Dr. Shepherd also will be our Regional Principal of the Year.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Lynn Reimer to join us in the front.
I'm going to go ahead and ask Lynn Reimer to join us in the front. Wells Fargo, in collaboration with the Department of Public Instruction, recognizes outstanding principals from North Carolina public schools through the Wells Fargo Principal of the Year Awards. In 2011-12, our CCS Principal of the Year, Hilda Batts, was also selected as Regional Principal of the Year. Recently, we were thrilled to learn Lynn Reimer, honored by the board in November as our Principal of the Year, now has been named a State Regional Principal of the Year. Ms. Reimer, principal of Central Cabarrus High School, is a transformative leader who creates community through her open-door policy with students as well as staff. As one Assistant Superintendent aptly described it, "Her folks would walk through fire for her." Her big three focus areas this year have been the freshman academy, the new STEM program, and a concentration on academic culture and climate. Lynn began her career as a math teacher and later was an assistant principal in Burke and Gaston Counties. We were fortunate to hire Ms. Reimer in 2006 as an assistant principal at Concord High School. She became the principal at Northwest Cabarrus High School in 2007 and has been principal of Central Cabarrus High School since August of 2011. We congratulate Lynn on her stellar leadership, recognized not only within our district but also by her selection as Regional Principal of the Year. And let me present you with a plaque, and please accept congratulations.
Okay, board members, we have one more presentation tonight, and this will be the North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award, and Dr. Shepherd's going to make that presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're very honored tonight to recognize the work of Ronnie Boone, our Public Information Officer, and an award that was given to our 2010-2011 Annual Report. And I want to ask Dr. Sane, who was with Ronnie last week in Greensboro, to make this award tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. It is my pleasure to share with you that Ronnie Boone has been recognized as North Carolina Public School Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award winner, which is given annually. I'm so sorry. I've heard that line so many times. Will Ronnie Boone and her family please come to the front? Ronnie Boone, it is my pleasure tonight to share with the public that you've been awarded the North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award.
of the minutes from our past meetings. You have the minutes in your agenda there for February, the, let me see, 2nd, our board
It's given annually to recognize outstanding and effective communications from school systems across the state.
retreat, February 4th, our work session, and February the 11th, business meeting.
Particular category she won the award in is the annual report category, 2010-2011,
Now, I was not here for the business meeting on February the 11th, so I'll have to abstain
titled Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow.
from that vote because I wasn't here.
And just to give you a sense of what the judges thought of it, they said it was a good,
So I would need a motion that we approve February 2nd and February 4th unless there's
comprehensive report to the community. We like the way it's organized with all of its reported successes in each area.
any changes. And I would assume our attorney will have to vote separately on February 11th.
Overall, a great report. I just want you to know that we are honored in Cabarrus County to work with someone of
Is that correct?
If you want to, or you can just note your abstention, but if there's any dissension,
the caliber and class of Mrs. Ronnie Boone. Congratulations.
yes, you should not vote on the ones where you're not present. It's fine.
Okay. All right, now, we're going to vote on the 2nd and the 4th, is that right? Or do you want to do them all?
You can do all three as long as we'll note your abstention on that.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll be abstaining from the February 11th vote then. All right, so we'll be voting on these. Do I have the motion that we accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Monroe, you have the...
I think Carolyn did.
Didn't you second it, Carolyn?
Mr. Harrison.
Mr. Harrison seconded the motion. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Okay, now, we'll move on to the report section. We have several reports tonight. The first one will be from Dr. Kelly Probst, and she's at the podium. This was our update on digital readiness for the state testing mandate.
Good evening. As a reminder, in 2014-2015, all state assessments will be online, and there will be no more paper pencil assessments. Starting this year, we've already had some of our assessments online, and it has caused us quite a challenge with the inability to find enough devices for those assessments. So the migration to online testing has begun, and it's really important for us to emphasize the fact that in Cabarrus County, we want to make sure that we limit our testing window and limit the number of exam days. If the exam window or testing window gets too large, we could have students testing three weeks apart, and we don't believe that that's fair to our students. So as of, or let me say, it's predicted by the end of May, we should have our middle and high schools at a two-to-one ratio, two computers per one child, and there'll be equity. Everyone across the board in those schools will have the same number of devices. It's important to know that this would allow us, based on predicted testing schedules, to have two testing schedules in a day, a morning exam and an afternoon exam, and still keep with the four-day testing window. In our elementary schools, based on some numbers today, I think we'll be close to a three-to-one ratio, possibly a 2.5 ratio, close to a two. And this, again, would allow us to keep on a four-day testing window in our elementary schools. Additional access points are needed in our classrooms. With the QSCB, we were able to put wireless access points in 10 of those schools in every classroom. With funding we received this past summer, we got all the buildings wireless. But when we talk about moving to a two-to-one or closer to a one-to-one, and 30 students on a computer in one classroom next to another classroom, we do need to have an access point in each of those rooms. We're predicting right now, in our latest count, about 450 access points need to be purchased, and that will be part of this plan. In addition, we're moving Royal Oaks and Wolf Meadow, as discussed, to a one-to-one in grades three, four, and five, so that all of those students will have access to that. I think it's also important to note that in recent inventory, it's showing that our STEM program at Coltrum Web will be close to, and 80% of the students will have access to technology. So we're moving towards a one-to-one with them, and that puts them more well-equipped than our other elementary schools. The testing devices are primarily, they're computers. We do have some scenarios in our district where the iPad is used as the testing device, but that's in one-to-one situations where the child is using the iPad all, every day. We're looking at the iPad at this point as a device similar to a modification that we have in testing. If the student is using this all year long, daily, then we feel comfortable with them using this iPad in the testing scenario. We do think in the future that this could be something that we move in that direction. I will tell you that we piloted the Chrome technologies, and we were highly disappointed. The state does not support the Chrome technologies at this time, and we thought maybe they were just kidding, so we tested it, and you cannot get on and take the state testing. So do I think in the future that that will be a development? I certainly hope so because of the price points on the Chromes. I think it's important to realize that while this is a great boost, and there's principals out in the audience, I'm sure they'll give you thumbs up. They received emails today about the technologies coming to their schools, and they're excited. We still have 16,000 computers, and 80% will be out of warranty by the end of August. So it is still highly important that we send the message as we go through budgeting that we need to constantly think about our renewal process in the district. And I could just finally want to end by looking at this in terms of phases. When you think about digital readiness in a school system, the lowest level is, of course, if there are no devices. We've now moved up to the next level, what I'll call the mid-level. And basically, it's adding technology, so we'll call it the additive phase. And in this phase, you're spending your time going, well, what do we buy? How many do we buy? And that's basically where we've been. What I'm hoping in the future, and the conversations that we have starting in the summer and next fall, is now, so what? Now that you've got these devices, can we look at technology as an ecology that is constantly changing, and what's it doing for the learner? So that the focus becomes not about buying the device, but now how it's being implemented and integrated in the classroom. And that's a much richer conversation, and I hope that's where we go. So at this point, are there any questions?
Okay, board members, if you have questions, we'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side. We'll work our way down. If you have questions, let's hear them. If not, we'll move right along.
I have a question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, you have a question?
Now, I'm not real tech savvy, so this may be a really dumb question, but are you telling me that the state is not supporting iPads, then? Is that what this Chrome technology is?
No, they're two different things. The iPad, like you have right now, the state does support that as a testing device, and that does work for testing. What our point as a district is, unless a child is using that every day, or at least touching it every day, we don't feel comfortable saying, here, instead of taking the test on a computer, you may take it on an iPad. Ms. Reimer has had her students in the STEM program take the EOC, they're benchmarking on the iPad, and it's worked beautifully. But those students are very comfortable with the iPad.
Explain, what is Chrome technology?
The Chrome, and there's lots of different Chrome books, runs about $300. It's much, much cheaper, and it's not an actual computer. It links you out into the cloud. I will tell you that we have a cart at Hickory Ridge. It works beautifully with some of our, they can access, they can get to the internet, they can do Destiny, they can, oh, I'm trying to think of our big discovery ed, they're able to do that. But when it comes to being able to do solid work, like working and creating things, it's very difficult. When it comes to going online to take the state assessments or Vocat testing, it's not available.
Is it like a tablet, then? Like a...
No, it's like a computer. It looks like a computer, but it does not function like a tablet. It functions like a computer, but it has no operating system inside the computer, and that's why we, they're pretty much disposable. Do I think that it's a future for us? The answer is yes. I think once the state opens that up and allows it, it would certainly be something that we might move in, especially with the price point. But until that's available, I feel very uncomfortable spending money on something that's not guaranteed.
But it's not the app, it's not the app here that...
It's not, and I'll tell you, the next time we have a meeting, I'll bring you one so that you can see it.
Okay.
It's just very different. Even the keyboard doesn't have capital letters on, it's lowercase. So I mean, there's little things that are different about it, but that's minor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger, you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has the state given you any indication on the future of that adaptability with the Chrome?
No, they haven't. And I told you the other day that Union County was moving in that direction, and I've spoken to the Assistant Superintendent, and he is quite aware that the state is saying that, but they're confident that the state's going to change, but we have not heard anything.
I mean, I guess at that point, that's a pretty big calculated risk.
It is.
I don't think I want to take, but I hope they do. It seems the logical step to save the districts some money and be able to get those devices out, you know, in a little less expensive way. And my only other comment was that, I think you're 100% right. Once we are beyond the just trying to scramble to get the devices, we've moved into a whole different arena at that point, where we're teaching and kids are learning on them instead of us just trying to figure out how to get them out there. So that changes that conversation dramatically. So anyway, I hope we get to that point sometime soon, and I think we're at least on the right path.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, for your comments. Mr. Walter.
You covered a lot of my questions earlier, and Blake, I guess you've got another one. The access points, 450, what are those? Are those wireless or those hot?
It's a wireless access point. Sometimes it's nicknamed a WAP, but we say access pointer, AP.
So one per classroom, or is it...
And they hold about 30 to 40 devices. The problem is, of course, once you get in high school and the students have their cellphones on and they've brought their own devices, then we have a cart. Sometimes we have to tell the students to turn their devices off in order to use ours, but if we have one per classroom, I think that we won't have any trouble.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison.
Just that I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Walter for his recent contributions and really great questions about technology, and I appreciate everything that you're doing for expanding our technology capabilities. I hope we will plan out very carefully with the other technology expansions that we are planning now, and then plan out how to integrate or reconsider the Chrome option at an optimal time as well in terms of the life cycle of the other technology purchases we're going to be making. So I'm sure we're going to coordinate all of that extremely well and then go back to the Chrome option in the future. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips, you have any questions, comments?
Well, first of all, it looks like we've gone a long way in a short period of time, and it's great. Keep it up. I'm sorry I did pre-award you on this one, but how do we compare to some of the surrounding school districts in terms of number of devices to students?
I will pull that data for you so that I get Stanley County and Rowan, Kannapolis, but I will tell you, there are some districts near us that do have the one-to-one, which, of course, I think all of you are familiar with Mooresville. They're in a different funding situation than we are, obviously. I will tell you that Union County, a year ago, made great strides, and they had a one-to-one with their middle and high schools. But I think in recent budget talks, you saw Kelly Klutz explain to you the additional funding. So when they purchase $17 million worth of computers and you hear that they get funded $18 million more than us, I think you can make the...
Yeah, we can figure out where they got it from. Right, okay.
So I am very proud of the fact that we're progressing.
No, it looks very good.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And Dr. Probst, thank you for all the work you do, and we're moving forward, moving at a fast pace, so I thank you for all your work. And I know when the mandate comes up, you know, we'll be close to being right on target.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, next section we have is 6.2. It's the Board Chair Comments, and I don't have, but just a few things I was wanting to say, and that is, you know, the year is well underway, and it won't be long before we'll be thinking about graduations coming up, all the seniors getting geared, getting their final placements for the year and all of that, and so they're real busy. And then the school system itself, we're working on the budget. I don't see Ms. Klutz here tonight, but she's probably somewhere working on the budget because that is a very time-consuming process that we started actually back in November, and we'll be having some more meetings relevant to that and be voting on it sometime in April, I believe it is, for the proposed budget. And so I just want to encourage everyone, students, parents, to keep doing your best, keep moving forward, because graduation will be right around the corner. I'd like to also recognize Mr. Tim Fur, he's back here in the back, you know, he's sitting in the back, he's our former board member. Tim, good to have you with us tonight. And anyway, the next thing is, Dr. Shepherd, you have a few comments or things that you wanted to say to the listening audience.
Just a few things, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we can figure out where they got it from. Right, okay.
So I am very proud of the fact that we're progressing.
No, it, it, it looks very good.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And Dr. Probst, thank you for all the work you do. And we're moving forward, moving at a fast pace, so I thank you for all your work. And I know when the mandate comes up, you know, we'll be close to being right on target.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next section we have is 6.2. It's the Board Chair Comments. And I, I don't have, just a few things I was wanting to say, and that is, you know, the year is well underway, and it won't be long before we'll be thinking about graduations coming up, all the seniors getting geared, getting their final placements for the year and all of that. And so they're real busy. And then the school system itself, we're working on the budget. I don't see Ms. Klutz here tonight, but she's probably somewhere working on the budget because that is a very time-consuming process that we started actually back in November. And we'll be having some more meetings relevant to that and be voting on it sometime in April, I believe it is, for the proposed budget. And so I just want to encourage everyone, students, parents, to keep doing your best, keep moving forward, because graduation will be right around the corner. I'd like to also recognize Mr. Tim Furr, he's back here in the back, you know, he's sitting in the back, he's our former board member. Tim, good to have you with us tonight. And anyway, the next thing is, Dr. Shepherd, you have a few comments or things that you wanted to say to the listening audience?
Just a few things, Mr. Chair. I do want to say that Ms. Klutz is in Raleigh tonight, learning more about the budget, the state budget, and we'll bring back, so you're exactly right. She's always worried about what's going to happen next for us. March is a very busy month for the school system, and we're taking time out this month to celebrate Student Artist for Youth Art Month. And I encourage our viewing audience to stop by the Education Center this month and walk through our art gallery in the hallways outside. And those of you that are here tonight, please enjoy that on the way out. We have some amazing artists here in our midst, and I look forward to sharing with you next month the winners of our Superintendent's Art Award. This month also, we're celebrating music in our schools, and we're celebrating the important contributions that our school social workers make, and helping our students and parents learn more about breakfast options. So there are lots of wonderful things that we're celebrating this month. And I'd like to make an important announcement about a change in the broadcast time for our recorded Board of Education meetings. The meetings will be shown now at 6:30 on Wednesdays on the Cabarrus County Government Channel, which is Time Warner Cable Channel 22. So please note these programming changes. And to the parents of rising kindergarteners, just a reminder that kindergarten registration will be held next month, April the 8th through April the 12th, at all of our elementary schools. And you can find more information about registration times on each of our elementary school websites. And I want to remind our parents of our annual parent satisfaction survey. Please take a few minutes to provide us with feedback. Your responses help us improve. And the survey is available online via our district's website, but paper copies are also available at each of our schools. And the survey will be open through March the 29th. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Always good to hear from you on the news from the school system. All right, our next section here is Section 7, which is the Guest Speaker Section. Tonight, we have, I think we've got 11 speakers that have signed up. We always offer a time during our business meeting each month to allow people to come speak to us, and that's what it is. It's your time to speak to us and our time to listen to you. So we've got these speakers lined up, and the first one we have on our list tonight is Mr. William German. And Mr. German, are you here tonight?
Yeah.
There you are. Good to have you with us. You've come to the podium, and I think the mic's already on, and you've got three minutes to tell us whatever you want to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Schu, and board members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you this evening. First, let me introduce myself. My name is Bill German. My wife and I live on North, or Circle Drive in Mount Pleasant. The back of our property faces the North Drive and also is opposite of Mount Pleasant Middle School Track Field, which is the elevated field on North Drive. The reason I requested to speak to you tonight is threefold. The first is about energy use, or more appropriately, energy misuse. The second is to address poor management of taxpayer dollars. And the third is to hopefully determine if any action has been taken about the vandalism that's associated with the Mount Pleasant Middle School Track Field. On November the 7th last year, I sent an email to the county office addressed to Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Schu, Ms. Boone, who is the Public Relations Director. And I copied Ms. Sewich, the principal of Mount Pleasant High School. The reason I copied her on that is because I was a former coach of the men's soccer program. The subject of the email was titled "Energy Conservation." And I stated in there, "After reading the report online about the county school's effort to reduce energy costs, I wanted to make the school district aware of a condition that demonstrates the poor use of energy, and also the wasting of citizens' tax dollars as it relates to Mount Pleasant Middle School facility on North Drive in Mount Pleasant." In my email, I explained that the lights at the field had been left on on several occasions all day long. There was vandalism of the locks and electrical boxes in the facility. Ms. Boone responded the following day to my email, ending with, "Our office will follow-up with you." As of tonight, I've had no follow-up response from Ms. Boone. On February the 4th of this year, I sent another email addressed to the same individuals, Dr. Shepherd, Mr. Schu, and Ms. Boone. I stated that I had become aware that the school maintenance department had repaired the photocells on the small pole lights at the track and replaced one of the electrical boxes that was damaged from vandalism, along with installing new locks on the electrical boxes. Once the new boxes were installed, some individual became, began leaving the small pole lights on all night long. In addition to the stadium lights, they were on for several hours each night, even though there were no athletic facilities. Now, I was associated with the County Parks and Rec in the past, and I know they have an agreement with the school district to provide funding, with the intent that facilities like that field would be used for youth athletics. I have monitored the light usage from February the 4th through March the 9th of this year and have accumulated the following facts. I'm a person who likes to deal with facts, not innuendos or anything else. The stadium lights were on for a portion of 18 days for a total of 29.2 hours. The small pole lights were on for 12 days for a total of 144 hours. After February the 20th, someone, I think, got some religion, and they turned those lights off. So they haven't been on since that date.
Mr. German, I hate to interrupt you, but your three minutes is gone. Do you have a report that you might can give to the board, you can give to Ms. Monroe and let her pass that around to us? I have to be real strict.
I, I have a hearing difficulty, and I can't understand what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I do have, I have a printed, I have a printed report here.
Okay.
I have my, the analysis, and then I have a copy of the emails.
Okay, what I would be interested in is the data that you have there, and if you would give that to our board clerk, she'll see to it that the board members get it.
And she's been very helpful with, with me with my hearing problem.
Absolutely, and we thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to our next speaker tonight. Our next guest speaker is Ms. Amanda Nocelak. Is Amanda here? I see she's coming to the podium. And Amanda, you have five minutes. You're speaking on behalf of a group, is that correct?
I am, and actually, my name's Cara Haberacher, so you can cross off my name further on the list.
And which, and what is your name now?
Cara Haberacher. I'm on the list lower, but I'm going to take them here to slot.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you're moving up. Is Ms. Nocelak not here tonight?
She's not able to speak tonight.
Oh, I see.
So I'm going to speak on behalf of the board, if that's all right.
Okay, that's fine. If you'll just turn that mic, it's on, you're ready to go.
Is it on? Okay.
It's ready, thank you.
Great. Well, hello and good evening. Again, my name is Cara Haberacher, and I have two children at Colton Webb STEM Elementary School, and I'm speaking on behalf of the PTCO, which is our parent-teacher-community organization, which is slightly different than most schools. When the call came a few years ago from Dr. Shepherd, I put our phone on speaker to hear the magnet update. Instantly, my son, who was then in first grade, said, "I need more math, I want to go to that school." Before that point, I had not even considered the school, as we were happy where we were. So we entered the lottery, and after much time on the waiting list, he was accepted. I immediately emailed the principal to see how I could get involved in the school, and before I knew it, I was the treasurer of the PTCO. So the presentation that we went to from the administration at the time was incredible, and it promised a one-to-one ratio for technology. Two years later, as a STEM school, we still do not have that technology, nor do we have the proper tools to use what we have. As a STEM program, a full-time technology teacher should be a given. And really, to ask the school or the PTO to fund this teacher is unreasonable when you look at the demographics of our school. And furthermore, as the PTO treasurer, we're already paying for many things I feel the county should have paid for. We've paid for 10 additional cafeteria tables this year so that our children could sit together as a class. We also paid for a new security monitor so the office could view security footage. The office went to the county this summer, stating that the monitor no longer worked, and they were told to view their security footage, which was originally on a large monitor, on their computers. Would you, tell me, would you want your children's safety to be hidden behind other screens? When the PTO heard of this, we went out the same day and bought a monitor for $100 and solved the problem. I want to know why the county did not take care of this problem. And there are certain things that the PTO cannot fix. At the end of last school year, I walked into our school office and was hit with the most offensive smell ever. When I questioned the staff, I was informed that a large animal had died between the roof and the ceiling of the office, but the county could not access it. I can't believe that the office staff was made to work through that stench for weeks on end until the heat of the summer burned away all the rotting flesh. Surely, surely you would not work in those conditions, I know I would have walked out. Our PTO has done some amazing things the last two years. We clothe many children that cannot wear uniforms. We pay for all of the after-school clubs, including Lego Club, Odyssey of the Mind, Science Olympiad, many things that are bringing recognition to the school and to the county. But these same parents who are putting all their time and energy into building our school and the PTO need to feel the commitment back from the county. It angers me when I hear that funding is going to the high school grounds or to their tennis courts, when I have to tell my kids that they can't drink water from the water fountain as the pipes are ancient. Or when I go into my son's third-grade classroom, and it's so small that the class cannot sit together on the floor, and they're on top of each other even while working at their desks. Or when we're at a disgusting road trip, or disgusting road stop in Virginia, my daughter makes the comment, "These bathrooms are nicer than ones at school." And just as a comment, the restrooms in the K through second level, there's only three stalls, so to try to get a whole classroom through there, it takes a very large chunk of time, when that time could really go better to be used towards educational. And our PTO can't get all of our parents together in one location. When we meet in the gym, we're on top of each other, there are people outside trying to hear, and we really need a larger facility. I understand that there is other schools in the district that are maybe as old as ours, and they may need, may need to be rebuilt first, but I'm pleading with you to start the process now. Because we're in the historic district, the process is not going to be easy. You're not going to be able to pull a folder out of your pre-designed schools and plop it on our small location and where we are. You really need to start the plan now so that it fits in with the neighborhood and so that it fits in with our specialized programs, so that we have the latest technology and science labs. I'm asking you to show our awesome parents that the county sees the benefits of the STEM program by funding a full-time technology teacher and to start the planning rolling on a new facility. This support and growth of programs like the STEM school is your ticket to being a top-10 school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Cara, and you stayed well within your five minutes there. I appreciate you doing that. Yeah.
I just have to sign. Yeah, I talked fast. I do have some pictures just at the outside of the school, I didn't know if I could leave those with anyone.
You can leave them with Ms. Monroe, we'll just pass them around to the board. Also, I failed to mention a little earlier whenever Mr. German came up, and I didn't tell him, that was one reason, maybe he went over. But if you look on the left side of the, there's a light there, and when it's green, that means you keep talking.
Okay.
And when it gets yellow, that means wrap it up. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker will be Taylor Girardi. Is Taylor here? Okay, Taylor, come on down, and you heard the routine. And you'll be speaking tonight on, on behalf of a group, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have five minutes.
All right.
And it starts when you start. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Taylor Girardi, the Student Body President at Hickory Ridge High School. I was to be joined by all the Cabarrus County Student Body Presidents, but due to illness and unforeseen circumstances, only Kayla Siegler, the Student Body President from Central Cabarrus, and Ryan Colangelo from Concord are with us. We would like to thank you for having us here today. I am 18 years old and participated in my first election last year, and I voted for each and every one of you. In the past, it has been considered an honor and a privilege to be on the Student Council, but we are starting to see signs of apathy. Students are under a great deal of pressure today and are finding it increasingly difficult to chisel out enough time for Student Council and academic requirements. Students are beginning to feel as if their efforts are not acknowledged and appreciated as they once were. Not allowing honor cords to be worn by Student Council members at graduation further supports this feeling. Asking for Student Council honor cords at graduation is a small request with great impact. Wearing an honor cord gives students an opportunity to be recognized for all their efforts and gives underclassmen something to aspire to. At most schools in Cabarrus County, being in Student Council means applying and interviewing for leadership class. We take leadership class for an hour and a half every day at the expense of lowering our own GPAs, as leadership is a 4.0 class. Overall, we estimate that an individual in Student Council spends approximately 185 hours a semester participating in Student Council activities. Many members who partake in Student Council do so for all four years of high school, approximately 600 hours devoted to Student Council. We understand that Student Council may not be viewed as an academic organization, but there is a minimum GPA requirement, and those in Student Council are typically the ones who are in multiple AP classes, clubs, and sports. Honor society organizations are recognized for academic achievement. Student Council members must meet academic as well as fulfill community and school service requirements. It is far too important to our school system to allow it to fall by the wayside by diminishing its importance. Student Council is unique in that it is the only, that it is the only club that concentrates as heavily on school service and spirit as it does on community service. Our Student Councils do so much in the community, including donating to homeless shelters, volunteering at the Second Harvest Food Bank, assisting Special Olympics activities, and this, second, donating to the Susan G. Coleman Foundation. The makeup of Student Council today is not based on the most popular students, but those students who are willing to invest tremendous amounts of energy and service to the community and school. When our actions reflect positively on our schools, they reflect positively on Cabarrus County. The strict code of conduct, the workload, and the drive of students to achieve are just a few reasons why we feel the least we can do is allow honor cords for Student Council members at graduation. We are the leaders of today and tomorrow. Please reconsider your stance on honor cords at graduation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Taylor. And you too finished up early, and we're proud that you could come tonight and speak to us on behalf of Hickory Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, our next speaker will be Ms. Rebecca Wall. Is Rebecca here? Okay, as she's coming to the podium, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Wall, and I'm here on behalf to speak of my daughter and a page that I have started called "Being the Voice of the Silent People." The whole purpose of this is to speak for the people that can't speak because they're either dead or they cannot speak because they are too young and their voice will not be heard. I'm here tonight because of a situation that is happening at Concord Middle School. Everyone is aware that bullying is an issue in our schools, but Concord Middle School has a severe problem with bullying. My child has been bullied since January and almost lost her life because of five girls who are bullying her on a daily basis. I have been to the school administration and made them aware of the problem on numerous occasions and cannot even get them to admit that bullying is happening. All the awareness programs in the world will not help if the administration will not do anything to stop the bullying. My child's life is at risk here, and I will not be silent. I have filed the grievance with the principal and met with her today and do not feel that anything will be done that has any difference from what has already been done, which is, in my opinion, nothing, but because the bullying hasn't stopped. My daughter goes to school in a hostile environment every day, and I will not allow this to happen any longer. I will do everything that I can to change it so that she can be safe. I am here to be the voice for the silent people, the ones who cannot speak and the ones whose voices will not be heard because they are too little and the administration will not listen to them. My child's life is at stake here, and I ask you to do something about the situation that is happening, because I will not be silent any longer. I will not allow this to happen any longer. I will continue to speak up, I will continue to make my voice heard because her voice is not being heard. And I ask you, please, for my daughter's life and for anybody else, because if she's being bullied, there are other people at this school and other schools in this county and in other counties, but particularly this county, that are being bullied. I know for a fact that other students are being bullied because of my daughter, because they are friends with my daughter. There are five girls who need to be punished for what they are doing to my daughter on a daily basis. Please do something about this situation before another child gets hurt, either my child or somebody else's child. child or somebody else's child. This could be your child that is being bullied or somebody that you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wall, for bringing this to our attention. Okay, our next speaker is Mr. Ronald Herlocker. Mr. Herlocker, you make your way to the podium, and I believe you've got five minutes to speak on behalf of the Mount Pleasant Group.
Thank you very much. Dr. Shepherd, Chairman Schu, members of the Cabarrus County School Board. My name is Ronald Herlocker of 8505 Fisher Road in Mount Pleasant. I wish to speak to you as a representative of parents, grandparents of Mount Pleasant Middle School. As a former substitute teacher for Cabarrus County Schools, most of my work was at Mount Pleasant Middle School. It was very enjoyable working with the administration, faculty, and students there. In early February, as I was reporting to work, I noticed a buzzer and camera had been installed at the entrance door to the school. I was pleased to see this done because I had read in the paper that all Cabarrus County schools were to have these security devices installed. However, I thought how strange it was that the front door entrance to the lobby and office was the only door protected. As you are aware, Mount Pleasant Middle School is either the oldest or second-oldest school building being used in our school system. I believe this facility was first used in 1955. It is built in an open concept, meaning there are many entrances to all areas of the school. Students must go outside the main classrooms to go to the office, gymnasium, cafeteria, auditorium, band room, school nurse, and other classrooms with outside doors. There are several entrances to the school from Highway 49, Mount Pleasant Road North, and North Drive, from where the entire school facility is open and unprotected. Please see the map that is provided, will be provided to you of these facilities. I know that the main purpose is not only to provide each child with the best education possible, but also to provide a safe facility. I have attached a copy of an email sent to the county school office from Dana Wilson, principal at Mount Pleasant Middle School, dated December 31, 2012, relating to security evaluations. I have seen recommendations for possible fencing around the school, two possible FOB systems installed. To my knowledge, I believe an FOB system is units installed on each door, opened only with a student or faculty ID card. At the present time, students are required to leave their student IDs at school at the end of each day. This is so most of the IDs will be returned to the school the next day. If students take their IDs home each day, how many do you suppose would be lost and forgotten the next school day? How many could be found and used by whomever? Mount Pleasant Middle School is unique, as the facilities are used by many community groups for meetings, sports, and other activities. This school is the center of the Mount Pleasant community. How many non-school-related people would need an ID card to use these facilities? Providing a six-foot fence would protect the facility, however, who would like for their school to look like Mount Pleasant Prison Camp? I realize that Cabarrus County Commissioners designate the money for the education in school facilities for our children. Any money spent now will only be a temporary and quick-fix solution. Four years ago, Mr. Schu made a motion to replace Mount Pleasant Middle School. This motion was approved by all sitting board members at that time. I believe this was in the top two or three on the to-do list. Since then, it seems the new Mount Pleasant Middle School has been lowered on the list several times. I don't know where the priority is now. The building of a new Mount Pleasant Middle School would be the best solution for our problems. I realize the only way to get this done is with a school bond referendum. I realize this would mean more taxes. However, what is the value you place on your children and grandchildren? I know you think I am preaching to the choir, and you are right. However, as the choir, can we please add another verse to the song and sing a little louder? Thank you for your attention on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Herlocker, for coming and speaking to us tonight. Our next speaker is Ms. Keisha Sandage, and I've seen her here. I think you spoke to us recently.
I did. Hello again.
Okay, so we're glad to have you with us tonight, Ms. Sandage, and I think you're speaking on behalf of a group as well, and so you have five minutes.
Okay. I'd like to start off by highlighting that so far we've had three of you guys to come visit our school, and we thank you for that. Additionally, we wanted to express our sincerest thanks in advance for voting no against the $400,000 that is being discussed for high school athletic programs, because you all understand that health is more important than luxury. Now, so that we all are on the same page with reference to potential hazards to the children and staff at Royal Oaks Elementary School, I wanted to share just a few facts of the toxins that hide within the walls, floor, and the air of the school. The first one is asbestos. Breathing asbestos fibers can cause a buildup of scar-like tissue in the lungs called asbestos and result in a loss of lung function, and often progresses to disability and death. Black mold. Mold produces and releases millions of spores small enough to be air, water, or insect-borne. Exposure to mold can cause symptoms such as nasal stuffiness, eye irritation, or wheezing. People at greatest risk of health effects are individuals with allergies such as my child, sinuses, or other respiratory conditions, as well as infants, children, elderly people, and pregnant women. The third one is lead. Lead is a major potential health risk, and in general populations, lead may be present in hazardous concentrations in food, water, and air. Sources include paint, urban dust, and folk remedies. Lead poisoning is the leading environmentally-induced illness in children. At greatest risk are children under the age of six, again, like my child. This information was obtained from OSHA.gov's website. Please keep in mind that even though these things are checked twice a year at the school, that doesn't mean there isn't some level of exposure to our children and staff. We feel confident in saying that the Board of Education members that have visited our campus this year have seen what we are referring to and can relate to some of our concerns. So again, I want to say thank you for coming. We, the parents, have also talked to several Cabarrus County Commissioners, and they all said that they are unable to allocate monies to rebuild or build onto Royal Oaks unless the Board puts it in their budget submission, so let's get that done, guys. They all agreed that something needed to be done to Royal Oaks before a new school was put in the northwest area. One of the parents processed with Board of Education member Ms. Carpenter, who is my personal favorite. I'm sorry, I probably shouldn't have said that, but I like you. And she said that building Royal Oaks, a new building, possibly attaching it to the K-1 building to save the proposed $2 million for land and another million plus by using the existing newer building. So we have a building that's about 15 years old, just attaching to that building and not, you know, building everywhere else. Ms. Carpenter was also showed a map, and she seemingly agreed that the new elementary school that was being discussed by the Board to be put in the northwest section of the county would not assist in addressing the documented problems at Royal Oaks. We would like for the entire Board to consider this suggestion, weigh the possible pros and cons as a team, and do right by our children by adding it to the 2013-2014 budget. Moreover, we feel a new school being, the new school being proposed by the Board would mainly be for the new higher-income people moving to Cabarrus County on the edge of Mecklenburg County, trying to avoid higher taxing, and not the people like us that merely want for our children what any parent wants and should be willing to stand up for. We are fearful, however, that if you guys ask for a new elementary school in the northwest in addition to funding for Royal Oaks, we will not receive the structure that our school so desperately needs. Through conversation with Board of Education member Mr. Phillips, who I also like, thank you for responding, as you have so many times, the Board of Education has additional funding this year. Yay! And you guys are talking about using that for security vestibules at each elementary school. Here's how we feel about it. This is very exciting news, but we are not sure it will work at Royal Oaks Elementary, and here's why. First of all, to install a security system would mean agitation to the floor in the old building and potential call for asbestos abatement. It is proposed that the building would need to be contained for this to be installed. We are not as concerned about physical safety as we are about health safety at this point. Can the Board of Education save those security vestibule monies when we add on to that building we're talking about? And also, we need more hands-on to man the bus system, the bus-in system, and our money could be used for that, or a school resource officer. In closing, please hear our pleas. All we ask of you is to allow children to inhabit within a structure that is safe and promotes their continued health. After all, we believe our children are the future, don't you? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sandage, for your report. Also, we have tonight Mr. Rob Williams. Is Mr. Williams here? Okay, glad to have you with us. You have three minutes, and it's, the mic's waiting on you.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, I appreciate it. My name is Rob Williams. I have a daughter in kindergarten in the STEM program at Coltrum Web. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be able to send our daughter to a STEM school, and we believe the value and the importance of the STEM curriculum. We know that we are fortunate to have this opportunity in Concord. I grew up here, and I've seen Coltrum Web grow and change through the years. My mother attended Coltrum Web, and now my daughter, and in a couple of years I'll have another daughter who attend. Like other parents at Coltrum Web, we are fully committed to the success of the school. We drive 20 minutes both ways every day because we believe in the school and what it has to offer the education of our children. We are very involved in the school and are active in trying to make Coltrum Web a great place for all children. My wife and mother volunteer every week at the school. The teachers and staff are fully committed to the success of the school and its students. I believe that we have some of the best teachers, administration, and one of the best principals in the county. What we are asking is for the school board to commit to the success of Coltrum Web. We, as parents and teachers, can help support the school, but one of the big issues right now is the school's facilities. They can't support the growing student population, and due to the age of facilities, quite frankly, they are not safe. A couple of facts, within two years, the school's population will increase by approximately 75 students. The cafeteria and classrooms cannot support this kind of growth. The facilities are already very crowded and we're quickly running out of space as it is. There's no facility within Coltrum Web that can house the entire student body without causing a fire hazard. Additionally, the facilities in general are in very poor condition due to age and lack of money being spent to upgrade the facility. The gym is carpeted, which is not practical, and it serves double duty as an auditorium. Many of the outside doors are wooden and are rotting. We have had situations where snakes, roaches, and rats have come in because the doors don't close properly. Our heating and cooling systems are outdated, the bathroom facilities are not adequate, and like most facility, they are old and outdated. The school is segmented into numerous buildings, and the students travel between them frequently, often without adult supervision. In our opinion, this presents a clear and dire security issue for our students. These are just a few of the facility issues that we are faced with right now that need to be addressed in the near term. We know that you have a lot of requests and needs to fill. We just want the Board to consider allocating money for the improvement of facilities at a school that has been part of Concord's community for many years. After all, Coltrum Web is the oldest school in Concord and has had very little in the way of facility improvements recently. In terms of facilities, we are way behind the majority of the schools in our area. Our goal is to make Coltrum Web one of the best schools in Cabarrus County and something the entire community can be proud of. We can't do it alone, and we need your help. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for bringing this report to us. We'll take all this under advisement. Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Lisa Self. Is Ms. Self here? Thank you for coming, Ms. Self. I would love to hear from you, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Self, and I have two children currently attending the Coltrum Web STEM program, and I have one that will start attending next year. Cabarrus County has taken a huge leap forward by offering parents and students the opportunity to attend specialized schools. These students of Cabarrus County can now find their niche and attend schools that meet not only their interests but their aptitudes for a number of specific areas. For our students, it's science, technology, engineering, and math. But in order to be successful, these STEM and IS or magnet programs need to be funded, sorry, cannot be made to be self-sustaining. Principals, vice principals, teachers, and parents should not be tasked with identifying ways to raise funds via grant writing or fundraisers to sustain this program that was adopted to and committed to by Cabarrus County and the members of this board. Grants and fundraising should be used to enhance our program, not to sustain it. Our wonderful administrators in our schools should not be forced to decide between adding more teachers' aides or funding the program as it stands, or trying to find dollars to fund a full-time technology teacher and a science teacher. These are not encore programs in a STEM school. These are our subjects, and we need to fund them. These subjects are vital classes that need to be funded above and beyond the mainstream school budget that a normal operating elementary school would receive. Our parents and PTO have fully committed themselves to this program, and in the first two years, we have raised over $20,000 to help with the purchases of technology for Coltrum Web. We are asking that a separate budgeting arm be provided for specialized schools, not only Coltrum Web, but J. and Freeze and Central High School. We, as parents, have made a 12-year commitment. We are not looking for an elementary school, we are looking for an elementary school, our middle school, and our high school. Our school should be competitive with any of the number of ground-wing charter schools in our area. The promise of a STEM school cannot lure the talent from our community if we do not fulfill the financial requirements needed for its success. Our STEM school should be outfitted with specialized teachers for technologies, as we do for science, and have the funding to allow the promised one-to-one ratio of technology for our students. You have our commitment, can we have yours? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Self. You did very good on your presentation. Our next speaker is Ms. Jennifer Smith. Is Ms. Smith here? I see she's coming, and Ms. Smith, when you get to the podium, you have five minutes. You're speaking on behalf of a group, I think?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciated the ones that came out to Royal Oaks Elementary School and toured and saw firsthand what the students and staff have to go through and what they, you know, do every day. As far as Royal Oaks campus, we are glad that you're able to see firsthand the threat of the health of the students and staff, the structural deficiencies of our 64-year-old buildings. We are asking that you put Royal Oaks on the budget for the upcoming 2013-2014 school year. The Commissioners said that the Board of Education needs to allocate the money for the addition on to our kindergarten and first-grade building, which is what Ms. Sandage said. But I am still going to suggest that we can be green. Let's recycle, let's do what we can. I'm all for recycling. I do everything I can possibly teach my children to recycle, but I think we can come together and find a way to somehow recycle things, reuse things, reuse computers, reuse desks. The children aren't going to know the difference of a new desk and an old desk, but as far as the health issues with asbestos, the mold, the termites, the, you know, flooding of our gym, anytime it rains, the awnings leaking on the children when they're walking to the cafeteria, to the gym, to all the old buildings that we have, since we have over 10. And also, I wanted to say that for the concerns for the high schools that y'all are going to vote on this evening, Royal Oaks still has no fence, no security cameras, no resource officer, and the threat of asbestos mold and lead paint are still an issue. Mr. Phillips told us that the money allocated for the security vestibules at Royal Oaks was there, which I'm really thankful for. But like Ms. Sandage said, if, you know, you put it in, you move the tile, you, you know, scrape the paint, any of that, then we're just going to have to seal off the whole building of the old building, because where you're going to put the vestibule is where the entrance is for everybody, for the media center, for the six classrooms that are there, for the staff office, for the principal and the vice principal's office. So if something happened to where the carpet was moved or the tiles would be moved, then that whole, the whole school would have to be closed down, so that would put six classes and the media center out. So if we can just save that money and maybe use it into the new building and attachment to the kindergarten or first grade, that would be great, because I wouldn't want you to have to use it twice. Save money there. But in the Effective Teacher Training Course that's required of all the teachers, staff, it talks about the resources needed to become an effective teacher, and one of the topics they teach about is the environment of the effective school. And the definition for that in this course that you require the teachers to have is, "Effective schools have adequate facilities and materials. The school building provides modern facilities for the students, the classrooms are large enough, brightly lit, warm and inviting, and a comfortable place for the children to learn. The media center is an inviting place for the students with a variety of reading materials available. The physical building is clean and well-maintained. In the effective school, personnel realize that a clean and welcoming atmosphere is the key to student success. They strive to maintain a pleasing environment that fosters student achievement and proves the best learning environment possible. This is what the parents, staff, and students wish to see accomplished at Royal Oaks Elementary School. Again, I appreciate all you have done and will accomplish for the future of Royal Oaks Elementary School. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Smith, for coming tonight and giving us your report. Okay, our next speaker is Mary Ann Baker. Is Ms. Baker here? And Ms. Baker, I have you down for three minutes as an individual, speaking as an individual.
Yes, yes, yes. It might be fast, sorry. Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Baker, and I have a second grader at Coltrum Web Elementary, and I have two more that will be there in the 2014-2015 year. I want to bring to your attention our need, not only for a new school, but at least to view the budgeting for a new auditorium and gymnasium. It currently is one, it is one space that is carpeted with no accessible nor secure bathroom. It has two wooden doors that enter the basement area of the gymnasium, and there's one bathroom, which would be considered a unisex bathroom down there. And in order for the students to use it during gym, they have to come down a very, very steep set of stairwell that is not safe for them, and like I said, there's two wooden doors down there that, you know, anyone could get into. We have pictures, part of those are included in carous. The school currently cannot hold any school-wide functions, parent meetings, guest speakers, or assemblies without creating a fire hazard and exceeding the max occupancy capacity. or assemblies without creating a fire hazard and exceeding the max occupancy capacity. In the fall of 2011, our first and second graders performed separately a Christmas concert. The second grade parents were asked to stand outside during the first grade performance because of the parent turnout. Parents still lined the walls two to three deep, filled every seat that was set up, and even sat in the aisles to watch a proud performance. However, many family members still could not get into the gym. How disappointing for these families and for these children. The boiler room, which is located under the gymnasium, is also one of the largest storage areas in the school, holding extra desks in our parent-funded uniform closet. The doors of this area cannot be closed nor secured because of moisture buildup in a poorly ventilated area. This has created a serious mold and mildew problem in an extreme toxic environment for our children, staff, and our parents. Physical activity is an important part of everyone's lives, especially our children's. Playing in the gym means learning a sport, playing games, and getting proper physical tips. Doing any of these activities on a carpeted surface is inadequate, not to mention unsanitary. Imagine a child getting sick or falling down and bleeding on carpet. This requires an extreme amount of cleaning and sterilization, which does not happen every time. A much more functional and appropriate gym floor that is easier to clean and safer for our children is needed. Overall, this gymnasium slash auditorium slash boiler room slash storage facility is extremely unhealthy, unsanitary, and unsafe for our children, our staff, and our parents. On behalf of Coltrane Web Elementary, I plead with you all to review the conditions of this school and replace this intricate part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baker. You run your time right down to the minute. You did very good. Thank you so much. Now, our last speaker is Miles Corner. Is Miles here? Okay, Mr. Corner, I have you down for three minutes as an individual.
Good evening. My name is Miles Corner, and I have a first grader at Coltrane Web. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. You could say I had a rough time going to school. When my teachers asked me to read Moby Dick and write an essay on character motivation, she might as well have been speaking in another language. It all sounded foreign. Early on, I accepted I would never be a good learner. As a teenager, I was fortunate enough to get a job at an IT company. There, I was taught by watching computers be repaired and networks designed. I then having the chance to try it on my own. I never could have gained as much knowledge by reading about it in a textbook. So you can imagine how thrilled I was to learn Cabarrus County was opening a STEM school. According to your website, a STEM school is a place that offers something different and something special. It's a place where technology and problem-solving are an integral part of learning experience. I knew this was a place that I wanted my children to attend. Overall, I am very pleased with the education my daughter is receiving. I know her teachers are working hard to create a STEM-focused environment, but I also know they are limited. According to Cabarrus County's current technology plan, Coltrane Web should have a one-to-one computer ratio, and yet it doesn't. In the same plan, it is written, we have thirty-six sites where we are not meeting students' needs regarding daily continuous access to technology. I understand budgets are tight, but I can't help but question how our STEM teachers are supposed to make technology an integral part of the instruction when this plan states that they cannot. Additionally, Coltrane does not have a dedicated technology instructor. Teachers have assistance for reading and math because it is recognized that smaller teacher-student ratio is a critical to success. When students have science encore, classroom teachers are required to stay and assist. But when it comes to technology, teachers are on their own. How can we expect them to teach the entire spectrum of technology with limited training and limited resources? There are schools in this county that offer science and technology as encores, staffed with science and technology instructors. I am not sure how these positions are funded, however, certainly, some schools have relied upon the PTO. Our PTCO has worked tirelessly over the past year and a half to increase their budget. However, given the current student population, it is impossible to compete with schools like Cox Mill and Odell. And while I love Coltrane, I'm just not sure how it fits the description of being someplace different and special. The staff at Coltrane is doing their part to make it a STEM school, but I feel it's time for the county to step to assist to bring the school to its full potential. Coltrane should have a kind of place where non-traditional, real-world learning takes place. If the county continues to treat it just as another elementary school and puts all of responsibilities on teachers and parents to fund the program, then it will be just another elementary school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corner, for coming. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our guest speaker section tonight. We had all of our speakers here except for one, and I just want you to know, I never was a public speaker in school, believe it or not. And so I admire you for coming and the courage to stand and speak what you have on your heart, and I want you to know we'll take this under advisement. I made good notes, and if any of you have your written presentation down and you would like to give a copy of that to Ms. Monroe or get it to us, we'll see to it that each board member gets it, and we can not only hear what you had to say, but we can read what you had to say as well. And then, of course, we've got the tape that we can go back to, to make sure that what you said don't fall on deaf ears, okay? I'm not going to tell you we'll get everything you won't accomplish, because that would be a lie. But I'll tell you that we'll look at these things and we'll see what we can do, okay? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on now, and board members, to our next section here, which is eight point one on our agenda, and this is the approval of the consent agenda. And you remember last week, we discussed these items? And so with no further discussion on these, do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Mr. Chairman, this may be somewhat out of the ordinary since this was put on the consent agenda, so this may be a question for Mark. If I've had a change of heart, and I don't necessarily want to discuss it all, but there's one in particular that I'd like to, to pull out. Am I stuck since we put it on the consent agenda?
No, I, I think any board member can ask that it not be on the consent agenda and move it to action. So you still have the ability to do that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that we approve this consent agenda as noted with the exception of the operations of food services, sixty-two twenty. I just had a change of heart, and I read some things this week that disturbed me a little bit about some of the food regulations that may be coming down the pike, so I, I don't want to hold the whole thing up, but that's the one that I'd at least like to maybe hold on to if we can.
I have no problem with that, and unless there's any other issues with the board, what we could do is, is I can call for a motion that the agenda be approved with the exception of policy number sixty-two twenty. Do I have a motion?
移到
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker, second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, are there any opposed? Okay, so what we'll do is, is we'll pull sixty-two twenty, send it back to the policy committee, and our policy committee will review that and then bring it back to us again, and then we'll vote on it at a separate time, okay? Mr. Kiger, is that what you want?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no problem. We take care of it. All right, now, we're going to move on into our action agenda. We've only got just a couple of items here. The first item is Dr. Kelly Probst at the podium. She's going to talk to us about the annual renewal on the leases for the computers, and you, you've had this, and we talked a little bit about it last week, and, but you've had the leases now for several days and reviewed that. Mr. Enriquez, our attorney, has reviewed the leases. So Ms. Probst, whenever you get ready, we're ready.
Good evening again. Thank you for being patient with me as I waited for those leases to arrive that got here on Wednesday, and per Mark's review, we sent those to you. We feel like Kelly and Mark and I are very confident that we're ready to go ahead with your approval and move on those leases. They will update three schools, Odell, Fur, and Boger. They will get them to forty percent, which is what we're aiming for, close to a two-to-one within the school for the students, and at this point, I'll take any questions you have regarding the lease.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Probst. We'll start on Mr. Phillips's side. If you have any questions, now's the time to get them cleared up, and then we're going to vote.
All right. I think it's in the material that you, you sent us today. I've got so many numbers going in my head because of budgets and things, that I've just got to ask you to refresh my memory. So the, I know these are Apples that we are buying.
Correct.
Are they replacing existing Apple computers, or is it?
They are replacing existing Apples, but we're not doing our typical replacement. Years ago, it was a straight desktop. Everybody got a desktop. And what we are starting to do is, of course, we outfit the computer lab, but instead of putting what I call onesies and twosies in a classroom, we're doing carts. That way, we have mobile labs and whole classrooms that can use those technologies. In addition, instead of replacing the teacher desktop, we're moving the teacher to a laptop. The idea is that the teacher can move the laptop home, can move the laptop back to school to use that as the device. What we are doing, because we do have longevity with those Apples, is allowing the current machine, which is five years old, to stay in the, in the building. We have a sign on it that says, if, there's no break fix on it. When it dies, it dies, it goes to surplus. And at that point, then the teacher must move that laptop back and forth.
Okay.
And that, that applies to all of the old computers, not just the ones that the teachers are using, but all the ones that you're replacing, you're not actually getting rid of.
There are some that are seven and eight years old, especially at Odell. They had to move their old equipment even into the new building, and those are going to surplus. And we've had two to three meetings with the principals and the TFs to look at inventory and decide what we can repurpose, what can stay, and what needs to go.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. You're all clear now? Okay, Mr. Harrison?
Just that, I'm sure Dr. Probst's work on all of this has spanned more than a year, and you've lined up things incredibly well. I appreciate that. When things get to the level of a, of a contract, I, I kind of back up because I have to rely upon your expertise and, of course, Mr. Enriquez's expertise to pin all those details down. If you're good with it, I'm good with it, but I, of course, defer to your detailed knowledge about these arrangements that we're making, and I'm in full support of you.
Thank you. It's the best pricing we've had in years, and the lease rate is the best we've ever had, so.
And I've many, many times heard you express that enthusiasm with this, with this plan, so I appreciate what you're doing.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I also want to say I appreciate your efforts in putting all this together, and thank you for responding to my emails and answering my significant ques, my, my questions. The point that I had here was that it was just on the unit cost and the unit discount. We have a ta, sales tax in addition to that that makes up the full cost, and that's why it didn't quite add up.
Correct, and thank you for making my Sunday evening interesting. I will tell you, it, we are getting back the sales tax. You understood that, Pete, that we filed for the local sales tax to come back.
Speaking of sales tax, I think you said that would be going into the general fund?
It does. When the sales, when we apply for the sales tax, it does not come back to the individual departments, but it goes back to the fund balance. It helps all of us.
Too bad Ms. Clutz is not here to defend herself on that, you know. Okay, Mr. Harrison, do you have something?
I'm sorry, just to chime in, approximately what might that amount be?
Oh, gosh.
I mean, is that a fair question at this point, or is this?
I can give you that, but if you, I can email that to you.
Okay, okay, but we're saying it would go back into the general fund balancing.
Correct.
We'd probably buy a few more computers, maybe. But anyway, that's another subject there. Mr. Kiger, you have any comments?
No, thank you for your hard work, especially when we hear that this is the best pricing you've had in years. It speaks to the due diligence you did, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Just to owe to everything they said, and we're taking your expertise and Mark's, and we know that you've done what, what you do, and like I say, I'm glad to see we got the best prices. You know, I'm always for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Shoemaker, you have comments?
I'm so glad you could help out Apple in their cash position, because, you know, they're getting ready to make an announcement as to where they're going with that. But this is just replacement computers. This is not the new inventory that we, we've also got plans to purchase.
What we did in this lease is we did the replacement, plus we went ahead and did the, we made sure we outfitted them the same way we are doing with the one-time monies that are coming in. So that's why you don't see the one-time monies for these three schools, because we took care of them with this lease. We could have possibly moved into a fourth school, but we decided it just made sense to outfit this school the same as we'll be outfitting the others. So it was a combination of renewal, plus also getting then to the same percentage that we are doing with the one-time monies.
And the state tax actually is going to be paid over a period of three years because it's a lease.
Correct.
And so you'll be paying state tax every year as a portion of that, so the two-point-two-five percent that we get back will be based over that period of time as well.
Correct.
So it's not something you could just add the numbers up and say we're getting this much back. It's going to be over a period of time.
I can give you that figure for the yearly amount based on the three-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand-dollar payment.
Okay. That's all I have, and I want to just say, there are a lot of thanks for all that your folks do. I know they work very hard. They were very diligent in not only accepting the state's, on the state's answer on the chrome, but to go out there and really do a lot of testing. There were a lot of hours involved in that. I didn't talk about that in the previous one, but also in this, I know that Michael and his crew have really been diligent about helping you out and getting this pulled together and just let them know how much we appreciate what they've done.
They're a wonderful staff.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker, for your questions and comments, and, you know, talking about the sales tax. You know, really, it's not that much, you know, when you look at it on an annual basis, because they're not going to give you tax back that you hadn't already paid in. So that second and third year, we won't get that until we pay it. So the first year, we'll get it back, though.
[laughing]
No, it, it will be over a period of three years, I suppose. But anyway, board members, you have the action item here. Ms. Probst has given us the, the information that we need, and so what I'm asking for is, do we have a motion that we approve the annual computer renewal lease, number three, four, five, six, and seven, that they be approved as they're presented, and you authorize me as board chair to execute these documents? May I have a motion?
Moved as spoken.
Seconded.
Ms. Shoemaker has made the motion, and Mr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Probst. You can get your leases all signed and sealed and get me to sign them and all that, and we'll get them off, okay? The next item, board members, we have is nine point two, the athletic facilities. We have Ms. Donna Smith at the podium. You know, we talked a little bit about this last week, and we've had another whole week to look at it, and we've got more information on this and that and all, but I'd like to give the board an opportunity to discuss this a little bit more, and then we'll vote on it. But Ms. Smith, whenever you get ready, we're ready.
I'm ready. I'm glad to be back. I, I won't review the proposal, except to say we were making the proposal last week to request an allocation of eighty thousand dollars for five high schools to submit to you a plan of how to use those funds. And I think you raised a lot of good questions, and I'd like to direct answers to a few of those. Plus, what you have on the screen before you is actually the list of items. One of the concerns as board, and I thought you raised some concerns that I think we can address. I think a lot has to do with timing and a lot of issues. I know I won't to infer that I'm presenting to you an extravagant list, but what I have before you here is actually a listing from school to school, and I'm just going to scroll down. You will find some schools have divided them in different areas. This list was developed by principals and athletic directors. After reviewing the capital list, there is some discrepancy. Many of these items are not on the capital list, and I think the question could be begged to ask, why? I cannot answer that. But I can express, as we're looking at this, most of these things are for the benefit of repairs. There are some, as you will see, a couple of schools that would not field houses, they have mentioned those, but many of these things are things people are not aware of that have to be done. And so that brings the question that was said, well, we bring in gate revenues, that should be able to fund these issues. And I need to tell you tonight that gate revenues do not support the facility upgrades that we're talking about, that we need to use in order to have a safe environment for our athletes and spectators. Some of these involve bleachers and a lot of things that are beyond just the student athletes. And what we need to remember, too, that it's difficult to cover the day-to-day operations of athletics. And we realize as athletic directors across the county, we need to come back to the board and to make the board, as well as our community, aware of the larger issues in terms of what in terms of what does it cost to run an athletic program. I think there's a lot of misconceptions there, if I could use that word, from the time you look at the cost of officials, security, and all of these things for games. It's unreal what comes out of budgets. And tickets do fluctuate from sport to sport. You have a very poor football season, you end up not having the revenue that you need to cover a lot of your less-revenue-producing sports. And the other thing, your attendance is varied by bad weather. Every time we reschedule a game for another night, our attendance goes down. And the other thing is who you're playing. As well as we know, we'll be moving into three conferences next year, so we're incurring excessive travel arrangements, as well as less attendance at some of the games. And that was the advantage of having a conference with all of our high schools in it because there's something about bringing back the community feel to sports. So I did want to address that being we will continue to have gate revenue, but it will not meet the needs of what we're talking about here. The other piece was with the current economic structure. Our corporate donations are really infrequent now. When things were booming, you could have a lot more revenue coming in that direction, but that, too, has changed. We are very dependent on active booster clubs and supportive parents and communities, and they are the key to our programs. Because many of the issues that you'll see here, you'll see some will mention that these were funded by boosters. Most of these have been. But as boosters fund, there's a limit to how much they're able to fund with the revenue they're bringing in. And so we wanted to be very direct tonight to be able to bring to you the list from high school to high school, including also Concord High and also Northwest Cabarrus, so that we could begin to have a good formal list of what athletic needs do exist. Because as you use, they wear out. And some of the items we will find were either installed incorrectly. We have problems with a lot of sprinkler systems. It's just things we've got to get corrected because they do create flooding and other issues. But roughly, I wanted to make sure I addressed the revenue because that was a question. Also, you asked for a prioritization. It was better for us to give you a listing of the projects tonight. Some schools have gone forward to say this is priority A or option A, option B. Others have just left their list there and talked about the timeframes of those. And then I did want to speak to the active booster clubs because that is very much a hallmark of our programs. So with that, I think the board had asked that we bring back a listing, and that's what I've done.
I can see you did. It was a very detailed list, a long list. A lot of the stuff, as board members, as you noticed, was very repetitive from school to school and, you know, with the various subjects there. But I felt like that we needed to at least discuss this just for a little while longer. And with that being said, Donna, we're going to start with Mr. Schumaker on my right, and we'll work our way down. And, you know, board members, I just want you to feel at ease, you know, and let us know how you feel on this. I mean, it might be, you know, the motion here or the request is $400,000 be spent on five high schools at $80,000 each. And as I had mentioned when we talked last week, just because that's what the recommendation is, that doesn't mean that's what we have to do. We can make some other type alternative motion or come up with some type of a compromise that might be beneficial to everyone. But you heard the needs tonight from the parents at the other schools. And then we've got a list that's probably twenty times that long that we presented to the commissioner. So when we talk about needs, there's a lot of needs. And then when you look at needs versus wants, that's a big issue also that I take into consideration. So, Mr. Schumaker, if you'll start us off on this, we'll talk for a few minutes on this. Thank you.
Donna, thank you so much for putting this together and at least getting us started in a discussion on this. Of course, when you look through this list, you just realize how needy we are in a lot of areas. You know, we have $185 million worth of things that Lynn has got in his list of things to do, and then this just adds to the addition to that list that we already have that's ongoing of deficiencies that we have in our process. And, you know, $400,000 isn't going to solve this list or any other list. I've been thinking about what direction we should go with this. And personally, I feel like we probably need to study this some more because, you know, right now, just giving an equal amount of money to each school doesn't really seem to really address where are our real needs. There were several safety needs that became apparent on this list and possibly need to be addressed in a very quick fashion. We need to assess those and find out just how unsafe these are, and do we have some life safety issues? There was one piece on here that even talked about a potential lawsuit waiting to happen. And so, you know, that brings to mind that if we had that type of a life safety issue that could really hurt someone, that we need to, we need to address that immediately and find out just what kind of risk we do have. And so we need to float some of those things up, maybe in a whole different track. But we have other needs. I mean, you just said, next year, we're going to be traveling a lot more. Concord's going to be going out of district. No, Robinson and...
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant will be going, both going in different directions. And so our activity buses are at the limits. We know we're going to try to get a few activity buses, but we don't know if we can get them all. So that's something we've got to keep on the radar to make sure we've got enough equipment to just move our children around or our athletes around as they go to these events. So I would like to have more time to look at this, to work with, work with your group on it, maybe to do a little more planning, to talk to Lynn because there's some other projects out there that we're working with right now but we still haven't got information on. And not just, just jump and kill this thing right off the bat, but at the same time, you know, the hybrid approach doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be $80,000 per school for $400,000. It could be something, something less. And I would like the board to entertain keeping this alive and trying to really be judicious about how we use this money that we do have.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker, for your comments. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, as we mentioned earlier, and what we've heard tonight, where the needs are, what we've got. And I've kind of said where I stood last week. I know security is a very big, big issue for me, the security of our children. And I'm sitting here looking at this list, and the very thing, the first thing that pops up is Northwest. We, the big chunk of money we just put in that gymnasium. I look at that, and I said, wait a minute. That gymnasium was, what, two million, almost $2 million? That we're putting in, huh, two and a half million dollars? And then you're saying, oh, well, we're going to give them another $80,000? Yeah, I have to look. What have I done for Central? You know, there again, I can't say, well, no, can't do that. And then I look at Concord. Well, we've already said we're going to put the four courts in there. I say, no, can't do that. But I always say, I've got to look at the classroom first. And, you know, I'm willing to look at it, but as Barry mentioned, I think we need to look at this thing closely and look at this list. Look, make them say, well, if you want something, let's look at what the immediate needs are. I think it needs to be assessed and look at what it is. My very first thing is, I still want to see SRO at Royal Oak's before I would do anything. That definitely needs to be done. I want to see that done before I would go put money into, you know, painting a gymnasium. I was out there. I know that needs there. That's $55,000. I would want to do that before I did anything. I mean, that's a must. But I think we need to assess this, go back and say, what is your first priority? Because they were just put out there, as you said, some of them kind of prioritized. But I would like to see us table this, get priorities, and see what is the most top priorities, instead of just doling money out and say, ah, here's your $80,000. Of course, people's going to take it. But I want to see our school needs met first.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
Chairman, could I interject just one thing?
Let me, before you go on, Ms. Smith, the cameraman needs to change their disc, so let's let them get that done.
You don't want me to do all the cameras on?
Just hold that thought.